Well, welcome, everybody, to the Monday, February 14th special Valentine's Day edition 2011 of the Bradleboro-
Here's Brad just for the-
Bradleboro Planning Commission. Just a quick agenda review. We- the bulk of our commission discussion tonight is going to be about the draft chapter on agriculture. And just to either inform or refresh people's memories, the way that we're doing the town plan work that we're doing now is we're discussing outlines of chapters. And then, two or three meetings later, we are talking about the draft chapter that's the result of that chapter outline. So, it's a way of discussing it, and then enlarging it, and then discussing it again with the eye towards- or the purpose towards completing that chapter. So, so tonight, we're going to talk about the agriculture chapter, and then we're going to also discuss the chapter outlines of communications and transportation. My goal is to be done by eight o'clock tonight, just so you know. So, if you were counting on being here between eight and eight-thirty, you can stay, but we're going to go. So, no, it's a- this is our third Monday night in a row of meetings, and it's time.
And it's Valentine's Day.
And it's Valentine's Day, gosh.
Gosh, gee whiz.
So, first order of business is to approve the minutes of our last meeting, which was February 7th, last Monday night. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I move, we approve the minutes of February 7th.
Is there a second?
Sure, a second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Fire away.
On the top of the back page, the very first bullet where we discussed talking about a task force of citizens, the sentence where it says, "The PC agreed that reinforcement of existing committees is more effective than reinventing the wheel." I don't feel like that sentence as written really reflects- doesn't reflect my opinion, anyways. Or does- and it doesn't reflect exactly kind of the conversation that happened here. I don't know if anybody else has- Dana wasn't here, but I don't know if anybody else has any comments about that.
I don't remember it that way, but my memory is not perfect either, so.
Well, I actually do think that's the- that was the gist of what we talked about. Only, I think the idea was that groups like the Energy Committee, the Conservation Commission, the Ag Committee are all- have all been involved with the writing of the chapters.
I don't disagree with that, I just don't feel like we- it- the way it's written, it makes it sound like we've agreed that it doesn't need anything else, that what exists already is there, and I can't stand behind that personally, myself.
Okay.
So, that- for me, that statement isn't true. The way- like I said, the way it's written.
All right. Well, do you have a suggestion as far as-
Well, just that we did discuss that, rather than is- I don't know.
Okay. Well, we can strike that sentence. We discussed the idea of a task force of citizens.
And we mentioned that existing committees would be- might be a useful way to do it also. I don't- I don't think that we came down clearly one way or the other.
Something more general, like that the general- the general structure is good, and we- I don't know, something that leaves us the room to still fine-tune things, but-
Yeah. It was discussed that committees that already exist could be a part of that process or something. I don't know.
We could just go back and listen to the audio again. I guess my recollection is my own, is that the scope of each of the existing standing committees or commissions and boards was discussed in terms of that they encompassed most of the things that a task force or task forces would do. I don't know if anyone actually had the reinventing the wheel term, but I think that the recollection, my recollection is that people just on the commission discussed the scope of the existing committees and decided that- that I agree with everyone, I don't think the decision was made, but in the sense of that discovery was that at this point, no one was- no one was moving to the decision to form or investigate the formation of task forces.
Yeah, I guess- I guess I'm concerned with the word "agreed."
Yeah.
And that is more effective, creates a whole different picture of what was. I don't disagree with that, we talked about that, and that is a good way to look at it, but I just don't want it- it just sounds like it's already been decided that this would be the only-
What if you substitute the words "discussed" for "agreed"?
Yep.
So, PC discussed how reinforcing existing committees might be more effective than-
Yes.
And rather than using, if it was a reinventing the wheel, actually say creating another task force or creating a task force.
Just, Pete, the planning commission discussed reinforcement of existing committees as being an effective way to look at this, or to deal with this, rather than, again-
There is video and audio, Big Brother was watching, so we can always find out, for sure.
I know.
What fun that would be.
It's very exciting.
Meet me at BCTV afterwards, and we'll have a great time.
Popcorn.
So, how about something like, we discussed the possibility of existing committees taking on some of the work of, what's the implementa-
Implementation.
Of, yeah, either implementation or, that's probably more than we want to say.
Yeah.
How about when PC discussed how reinforcing existing committees-
I liked what you started with.
I liked how you were- I liked how you were starting off there.
Well, how about if we let Sue-
Just discuss. Yeah, and take out the word "more effective," or it could be- and it could be "ineffective." So, that it's like, it could be one of-
Yeah, I think it's a bad idea, I don't think anyone was deciding from this morning.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll rework that sentence.
One other thing in under E on the front page, under other business, my suggestion to have, I just want that, my request, to be a little bit more clear than what it was, than what it is, because I really asked, I'm pretty sure, maybe I, again, listening to the tape, that I wanted all people who had been to any public charrettes or any small groups, in addition to the people who've come to this, to our meetings here, to be notified each, each time we have a meeting, that that goes out. And it doesn't get picked by, well, we're working on education, so we'll only invite the education people. And so, I just want it to be clear that it, the email material goes for every-
So, it says to all participants of prior public outreach events, is that what you wanted to say, or not?
Yeah, that's fine, just that it be sent out prior to every meeting.
Okay.
Prior to every planning commission meeting, because that's really what I want.
So-
And I know between last week and this week, with short notice, but I know that didn't happen this week, so.
Okay.
Till we get caught up on that. But I just, I think that's really important, to ensure, giving people opportunity if they want to come and speak about something, if they had been at a small group.
Okay, got it. So, prior public outreach events, prior to each meeting, so that they can stay involved with desire.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of approving minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. So, the next item is announcements. One of the announcements is the same as the announcement from last time, which was for the commissioners and for anybody else.
Can you speak louder, please? We can't hear, we can't hear. Question is table, we can't hear the table.
Need to turn this thing off.
Right.
You're taking over my job, I usually say that.
Well, I learned about when you have a mustache and a beard, you have to be a lot clearer. I learned that a long time ago. I'll try.
But he doesn't, our fearless leader doesn't have a mustache and a beard.
I don't, but I have a doctor that told me I'm not supposed to speak too loudly.
Oh, I see.
There you go.
You need more chocolate.
What the heck. But, you know what, that actually brings up a good point. If anybody would like to come up to this table up here, we're all wired for sound and everything, so that's why that table is there, so that we're not so much everybody back there and everybody up here.
Yeah, we're like in a circle.
So-
Maggie and-
And there's a, you know, microphone there, so you don't have to worry about whether the- whether you go to the mic there or not.
And you all get to have Valentine candy.
Yeah.
There you go. Cool.
Yes.
Great.
Which is what you want in a planning commission meeting, so.
On Valentine's-
On Valentine's Day, right.
Hold hands and sing kumbaya or something.
Something like that, yeah. We'll see how things go.
No, we need a campfire for that.
So, the first announcement is that there is going to be a, on Thursday, March 10th, on Vermont Interactive TV, there's going to be a presentation of the League of Cities and Towns about Public Service Board Proceedings and the municipal role, which sounds like a dry subject, and it probably will be a dry subject, but it is a subject. So, it's, for us that attend those things from time to time, it'll be a real great time. So, it's the 10th of March, which is a Thursday, at VIT, which is at the high school, and it is at 6:30. So, anybody that is interested in that, please contact the planning office, would you say? Yeah. Do we have any idea yet when the next public meeting is going to be for the-
No, the consultant's been out.
Okay. All right.
What I recommend at this point.
Yeah.
He recommended he be out of the country?
This is the week to do it.
Yeah. Okay, fine. Depends on which country he's-
Yeah, really.
But, yeah. So, any other announcements?
Just happy Valentine's Day, you know, again.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Okay, so, next thing is other business, which is kind of-
Nothing.
Something we need to get over before we launch into our other business. And the next thing is public comment. So, this public comment is about things that we're not going to be talking about, you know, so, like I said before, we're going to be talking about the draft chapter discussion of the agriculture chapter tonight, and then we're going to be talking about the chapter outlines of communications and transportation. If you want to talk about something else, this is the time to talk about it. You'll be able to talk about those things during those times, so.
So, you can't talk about transportation, you know, you're going to discuss about transportation.
No, what I tried to say was, you can talk about transportation, but we're going to talk about it, you can talk about it when we're talking about it, you know? Unless you just want, I don't, are you thinking of leaving before we talk about it, or?
No.
Oh.
And you're going to discuss the sidewalks and the parking, all the stuff here, and I add my comment when you do.
Oh, yeah. No, that's what you're here for, right? Yeah, that's why people are here, is to talk about, I assume, to talk about the town plan, so.
Yes.
That's, if that's why you're here, that's great, because that's what we're going to do tonight, among other things, so. No, this is, I'm just saying, this public comment time is for other things besides that, so.
Yeah, similar to what they do at the select board meetings. Anything not on our agenda.
Okay. Well-
I have a comment.
Sure.
And it's about the minutes from the last meeting, about the suggestion of the South Main Street neighborhood group, which they suggested official display, current town plan efforts, and the municipal center. And I'd just like to underline, from my perspective, I think that would be a really great idea.
Okay. You and Carolina can be a committee if you want.
Sure.
Yeah, I offered to help do that, so. The schoolteacher in me, you know?
Well, do you want to do it?
Sure, I'll come help with Julia, you know, I guess Sue and, I mean, they got the stuff in the office, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, sure. We'll make a date.
All right.
I guess I will say something, if I have to leave at seven.
Okay, would you say, actually, I'm sorry, I should have said, would everybody say who they are?
Oh, yeah, I'm Bill. I'm Bill Knowles, I live in Rattleboro.
Okay.
And I'm not sure where this is the place, but it's like, we spent thousands of dollars for these wonderful ramps to get across the street, for the people in their power chairs, and you couldn't get, you couldn't get across the street. There was no ramps this winter. They weren't cleared, they were all icy and snowy, all of them, all the time. I was there every day, I know they didn't do anything about it. And I was talking to my friends that had power chairs, and they, they just didn't get around, or they went down the middle of the road, because they couldn't. The sidewalks were fine, a lot of the people really took care of the sidewalks wonderfully, but then you get to the corner, she came in anywhere. You know, I saw a woman fall the other day, right at Ice Street, right on the sidewalk, right, trying to come across the street, and it was two and a half inches of ice, and she fell on the ground. I wish I had a camera. I went there, I took salt from the River Gallery, went in there and salted the ramp. And the ice is still there, but at least it had salt on it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we have these wonderful ideas in Rattleboro, and then we have no follow-through for one reason or another. You know, the other issue with the gardens, we have these wonderful gardens in Rattleboro, but nobody takes care of them because there's no money.
Is that a town, like, that's the-
Public Works.
Yeah, Public Works, the flower, whoever's plowing is responsible for-
Yeah.
That sounds too complicated.
Crosswalks and everything, though, they, who does that?
DPDW does the crosswalks. The store owners, my understanding is it's the property owners with frontage on High and May, mostly May, but also High and LA that are expected to keep the sidewalks clear.
Okay, then you wouldn't have to finalize the mold eye in that store in the corner?
In the bank, on the other corner.
I couldn't, I got stuck there last week, I couldn't-
Couldn't get traction.
Couldn't get, no, there was snow, it wasn't shovel.
Yeah, that's-
My chair can't go through snow, so I had to try to back up in my wheelchair to get back on the road. And I thought that was a ramp part, and that was covered with snow, and it wasn't ramp, it was curved.
Yeah, that's one of the places, didn't they put the ramp up further? It's not in the same place as it used to be.
Yeah, it's a little, the section that goes across Ice Street is a little further up Ice Street than it was.
It is further up, yeah, it doesn't fit with the other ones.
No, not anymore, yeah.
So, who would you, who would you call, who would you call to report that? You wouldn't call the planning department, you'd call town manager, or you'd call Public Works directly, or?
Public Works.
And who would be responsible for enforcement? That's not us with the zoning administrator, it would be.
No, but what we, I mean, what we can take from what you're saying is, look at the transportation part of this, and we talked a bit about this at our last meeting, and we have talked about it many times at our meetings, that in the town plan, we are going to emphasize, because this has been emphasized to us at all town plan meetings, that people are concerned about accessibility, about pedestrians, and about bikes, you know? And I think those topics are probably the number-one topics that we've heard about, you know? So, so I appreciate you underlining that. You know, I don't want you to think that we have some enforcement or some, some way to make this happen, but we, we can do what we can do, which is, we can emphasize it in the town plan.
But until we're aware, so that's my whole, my whole point, until we're aware.
Right.
I mean, the only reason I'm concerned about this, because I had a friend of mine who was in a wheelchair, and he lived in his wheelchair, and I, and that's the way I know it, that's the way I'm aware of it.
Sure.
And I understand that people aren't aware of it, they don't have somebody in the family in a wheelchair, they're not, they're, they don't focus on it.
Right.
I focus on it, aggravate it. The corner down by the co-op, the contractors are shoveling and salting those two posts where you press for the crosswalk, and, because they saw me doing it, and now they're doing it, they're taking, so I don't even have to do that corner anymore.
Uh-huh.
But that's what I was doing.
Sure.
Making sure you could get to the post and press the button to get across the street, because you couldn't.
Yeah.
It was like a foot of snow.
Yeah.
Right now, that, right now, that ramp has 16 feet by eight feet by three feet of snow, right on the ramp.
Do you know the number off the top of your-
This is three hundred.
I just, I think it would be, I think you guys should call, and sort of get some action.
I can pass on the radio station, and I'll, and I'll make sure that you get, that you can support it. Thank you.
I do notice that there's a number of stores that don't always shovel, like, the last 10 days, we've had these little one-to-two-inch snows, and for me, it's difficult to walk, I have a condition with my legs, and it's very difficult, even if there's, people think, well, it's no big deal, there's just an inch of snow, but for anybody who has any kind of disability or in a chair, one inch of snow is disastrous.
Now, the mold eye, I didn't want to just mention the mold eye, who's the corner on the, who's the store on the corner?
Dragonfly, Dragonfly Dragoods.
Dragonfly. Even today, that's a dangerous corner.
That's always, I hate to point the finger too, but that's a bad corner.
Yeah.
I'll add my two cents to that. That whole street, that whole sidewalk, all the way up the hill, is treacherous.
Yes, people don't shovel that well at all.
There's tons of ice there that I almost fell going to a meeting today with the ice that had, you know, it's partially covering the sidewalk, even after you hit that driveway before you get to the Backside Cafe area.
That's right.
I mean, it's, it really doesn't, it doesn't convey pride and community-
No.
Very well, or a welcoming downtown atmosphere if you have trouble, even a fairly, you know, mobile person who doesn't have a disability is taking their, you know, life insurance-
Yeah, there's a lot of little spots like that around.
Downhill from the Blue Moose-
Yes.
To, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, where you have the rail.
Yeah.
For dear life.
So, so you will communicate this?
I will, I'll get back to you.
Okay. The only thing I've, I've talked to people to see what their, what their position, how they felt about it, and one of the, one, the first excuse they use is this ice that falls off the building. That's the excuse they use for not shoveling their walk, which is insane, total insanity.
Yeah.
Because even if you leave the snow there, you've got blocks of ice coming off the thing, you've got danger there, you know? And I don't know, I don't know, when was the last time someone got hit by a snow, you know, snow coming off the roof.
Yeah.
I bet they have. Oh, yes. But, you know, shovel a walk.
There are, there are barriers there for the ice, I think, with little sawhorses or something, I've seen those.
Okay, I'll follow up on that one. That's what I like, that's what I like, that response, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Larry, would you want to mention why you're here?
Sure.
Would you mind mentioning why you're here?
I'm a student, the, at Barbara College Graduate Program, and I'm in the MBA program for managing for sustainability, and I'm here for what we have a law course in the program, and it's one of our assignments is to sit in on planning work, eating, and just sort of get a flavor of what goes on, and that's why I'm doing, that's why I'm here.
Yeah.
Great.
As to my girlfriend's dismay.
On Valentine's Day, you know?
Oh, yeah, we make that, we make that a business to-
You can take her a handful of chocolates.
We're doing it right now on the planning mission.
Changes your notion of sustainability, doesn't it, a little bit?
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And you're, I told you, you know, at basketball, that one of your classmates was here.
I saw, oh, yeah.
Suzanne?
Suzanne.
Suzanne.
Yeah, last week, we had somebody, yeah.
So, well, good, I'm glad you guys are doing that. It's, it's good to see people here, for one thing.
It's good to see you, good action.
Yeah, yeah, 12 hours later, right? Yeah, we play basketball in the morning, so.
Yeah.
At 6:30 this morning, we were-
12 hours ago.
Doing that, so. Good to see you with your shirt on.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
That's a little joke, a basketball joke, that's all, so, okay. Any other public comment?
From sidewalks to-
Did you? Go ahead.
I'd like to see that verbatim in the notes.
Okay.
We like to have fun on the planning commission.
I like to think we like to, anyway.
Your eight o'clock goal is slipping away.
I know, it is.
Fast.
Every little joke I make, so.
Sorry, people.
So, the, the next item on the agenda is a draft chapter discussion of the agriculture chapter. And, uh, what we did last time was go through questions or comments that we had, and I'm anticipating that Dana has got a whole box full of those. So, but we, and if you want to, you want to make some comments about what you see?
So, I want to start off?
You can.
Start off, start off.
Yeah. So, do you folks have, all have copies of this?
If you don't have it, I can-
So, just a quick note, what, what the structure of the chapters is, is reflected in the, in the chapter write-up. And the first item in a box at the top is the value that we want to express, Bradleboro values, and so on, so forth. Then the vision, goals, objectives, and actions. So, the, this is sort of generically speaking, what the chapters of the town plan will be like, and these are the specifics of this particular one. So, this is the second one that we've looked at, and, so I think that our discussion last time, I don't know how much it changed the structure or anything in this one, but that's what we're aiming for, is to comment on the draft, so that it can be worked into the final, you know, the final version, so. Dana has particular expertise in the agriculture area, so she's, that's why I'm asking.
So does Todd.
So does Todd, yeah.
So, I don't know, you want to start with, like, goals and objectives?
Sure.
I thought, I'd love to add to the goals, what I had talked about, increasing consumption of locally-produced food, and sort of referring back to the farm-to-plate initiative and the implications for that.
Sounds good.
I have to say, overall, like, the two reports that I forwarded, you guys have just a wealth of information, and overall, like, I'd like to see more of that incorporated, I think, and less reliance on the ag census data, because I don't think it gives a full snapshot in terms of jobs, like, not just specific farming jobs, but thinking more broadly about food systems, and like, the sort of the sustainable food economy kind of thing. But, so, sort of back to, to goals, I don't know what you guys think about that, but sort of that one key piece of the farm-to-plate initiative.
Increase the consumption of local-
Of local foods by 5%, which is one of their goals.
We don't have a measurement of-
We don't have a measurement, yeah. We know, like, from, yeah.
I mean, I think it's in there.
It's in, yeah, it's in there, sort of what they've been able to sort of cobble together, they're saying that currently, a conservative estimate is that 5% of food purchased in the state of Vermont is locally sourced. So, you know, we have something to go by in terms of just trends of what people buy, and then, so, you know, a goal of doubling that, while we don't necessarily have a definitive- And then, so, you know, a goal of doubling that, while we don't necessarily have a definitive way to measure that. It could be, you know, a sugar monkey thing that we put in supermarkets or something like that, or just working more closely with the Vermont Sustainable Jobs Fund. Because one of their goals is also to start amassing that information and really be able to more closely analyze that information and come up with hard numbers, so. And no, I think it would be a really like important and significant thing if we're talking about as a town being more sustainable and wanting to sort of embrace and encourage the farming community, then a really simple way to do that is to buy more food from people who produce it locally. And they threw out numbers too, in terms of what that means for the average person and it's like nine bucks a month per capita or something. It's like not a huge number. So, it was a way of framing it, like it could be a concrete and fairly simple goal. I mean, I know a lot of people are on tight budgets.
So, so to be clear, you're saying the goal would be to increase
Consumption of local food.
From an estimate of five, five percent
To ten percent.
So, that would be five, five points essentially, that.
And the implication for that is like the multiplier effect is the creation of fifteen hundred jobs in the state of Vermont over ten years, so. How you break that down for Wyndham County, I don't know, but it's a, it's a big number.
Do you have a copy?
I had a quick question. I didn't even need to interject, I just would like to know, what's your definition of local? Because I know the governor has stated that there's a two hundred mile radius. He wants to expand that, the definition, or
Yeah.
And I wasn't sure if that, have you considered that when you made that definition? Because that can have a big impact on any, any of your top bill.
Yeah, well, I mean, when I think of local in terms of food, I try, I think kind of about Wyndham County and sort of like not just Brattleboro because most of the farms or a lot of the farms aren't right in, but sort of around, kind of, when you think about that, like the Brattleboro Farmers Market and the folks that, the vendors at that, and that, so.
Right, I just, I
Yeah, I mean, they're all different, you know, two hundreds, five hundreds.
Yeah.
But would you have, I mean, to follow up on this point, rhetorically, I mean, would you have a problem buying food from Franklin County, say, over California?
No.
So,
I mean, it's Mass, it's not
If you go with the two hundred mile radius, that gets you
Into Connecticut.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I have to look at what
You know, I think there's a good point to pursue, because it, there's a, you know, there's a sizable amount of agriculture in the southern half of New Hampshire and certainly
Yeah, so this report looks at some of that, looks at some of Mass and some of New Hampshire.
Right.
And I'm not sure what the mile radius is, but
You'd get upstate New York. Certainly just west of the Hudson, which is also a pretty strong
Region, yeah.
Not as strong as the hundred miles. So, is your notion in this
We can define local as, you know, whatever we want, wording, sort of from, from
It gets that sort of
From Wyndham County farmers or from, you know, what, however you wanna define that. You could look at the Farm to Plate and sort of what they looked at, they did go into, like I said, Mass and New Hampshire. I don't know if they went into New York, the radius.
Do you have the Farm to Plate report?
I, yeah, and I forwarded it to all of you guys
Okay, good.
A week or two weeks ago, something.
So, so maybe we would look to the Farm to Plate information to, to see what, what, what we might put in for a local, local area, yeah.
But there are vendors at the farmers, summer farmers market and the winter farmers market that come both from New Hampshire and Massachusetts.
Yep.
Yes, it's a good topic. I had a conversation with somebody that was, didn't wanna, didn't wanna go into a certain, a certain restaurant because it was chain. And, and they're, and, and they're from New Hampshire, and they're from Manchester, and they're from Brattleboro. And so, to me, that's local. But this person, you know, I don't wanna isolate, I don't, none of us wanna isolate Vermont from everybody else.
That's right.
And so, this is a real good topic about where is it, what are we talking about? We talk about New Hampshire, Maine, New York, Massachusetts, you know? And that's, that's
Another point, though, is that this is the Brattleboro Town Plan, you know? So, we're really, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Wait a minute, somebody else brought this up. I, and, and I, and I picked that up at other meetings that I go to
Yeah.
About this is the Brattleboro Plan, because I even said it at one of the meetings.
Uh-huh.
And I go to Post Oil Solution.
Yeah.
And everyone says, why, we're talking about Afghanistan, or we're talking about some, I say, wait a minute, what the hell are we talking about? Let's get back to Brattleboro, so I'm glad you said that, but
And I agree with you, I'm not, I'm not saying that this is all we should be thinking of, but I think it's a good question of how far a county
They didn't know.
Yeah.
Are we talking about Brattleboro, how to better, best Brattleboro, or, or do we need this submission from New Hampshire and Massachusetts, Maine and all that around there to make a decision on whether we're gonna do a Brattleboro?
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
To you, Dana, to your point about not depending on the ag census, and I don't know the Vermont Sustainable Jobs Report as well. I spent more time on the Farm to Plate. I think the, the problem, the reason I went to the ag census is because the information in the Farm to State, to, to place is at a state level.
Yep.
And that's, when you look at the numbers statewide and you look at what's going on in Wyndham County, it's different. So, I think you paint a different picture of what agriculture is if we're using state numbers than what it really is. And that's, that's why I was going with the census, like, you know, I have no problems with the increasing food consumption and stuff, but but just drawing on their numbers, I don't think is necessarily accurate.
Well, it's, yeah, to a certain degree, but I think like looking sort of, like for example, narrowly at just farming employment and not sort of looking at the food sector employment and some of the different, like NACE codes and industries that both reports draw from. So, it's not looking so limitedly at just farm workers in fields and that sort of thing. And I think that is really helpful and that is information in a lot of sectors, like in the arts and stuff, that we don't have accurate information on. So, when we have organizations that have spent a couple of years now pulling together that, that information and trying to analyze it, I think we should use it as much as possible. I think that the Vermont Sustainable Jobs Fund, they did the Farm to Plate report. I haven't contacted them, but I would imagine that they would have some county-specific data. So, you know, while they're cobbling together these numbers, like statewide, you know, multiplier effects and all of that stuff, that they could have some good data for Wyndham County too. That's, I would suggest, maybe reaching out to them, I'd been meaning to do it, and it's wrapped up in other things.
Maggie?
Just a brief comment on the local, defining what we mean by local. One, it would, might be interesting or useful, when that word is mentioned in the town plan is to define what, you know, what the, what the radius is for local. And then anything else is referred to as regional. So that you have local meaning this, regional meaning whatever regional is defined as being, and it would, it would be just defined. So that there isn't any guessing, you know, but if you divide local, what's regional, what's local, what's beyond regional, is where you're gonna go there.
Would it, would that depend on the subject? I mean, to some extent?
Yeah, yeah, I think there's a risk there of reducing, first of all, there's a whole movement about, you know, eat local. And by that, people mean slightly different things. Versus people not really having a good idea of what constitutes a region per se. And then there's different regions, so in a chapter on energy, if we talked about the region, we could talk about the ISO managed New England Electricity Grid, right? If we talked about, um, something else, you know? You, you end up dealing with lots of territories, and so while I think there's some, you know, what Maggie's saying, I think there's some virtue to actually emphasizing the regional, and I like that idea. We don't think or express ourselves in that way consistently. So, when we say region, it's not always exactly the same region.
Well
So, that, that, there's some challenges in kind of substituting regional for local or breaking out
If we're gonna use those words in goals, I think we need to say what we're talking about, so that everybody understands.
Is define, not necessarily using regional or local, but defining what we mean by local. I'm putting it right in here, so that there's no guessing.
Yeah. So, we can use, we can, we, we just, that's something that we really, I think, need to keep our eye on when we're doing this, is just if there's a question about, if we're setting a goal particularly, and there's a question about what, where we're talking about, what we're talking about, you know? It'll, it'll help to, to say what it is, so.
Without wanting to beat the subject dead. When you got, you know, if you take a step back from the plan in this chapter a little bit and think about what you, what you do with goals, or why you have goals, or what the purpose of the goal is, or how it works once the plan is in place. You know, one of the things that you can imagine is something similar to what went on to help the establishment of the yogurt plant. And so, that's an example of a new business that's located here partly because of its access to the natural resources that it uses, the milk. And it will draw from, you know, its ver, its version of local is roughly a hundred mile radius. You know, or a little more, which turns out to be what's reasonable to get a tank or truck of milk, you know, to the plant in a timely way. So, that's all of Vermont, that's the western section of New Hampshire, it's Franklin County in Massachusetts, and it's so forth. So, the reason why you wanna have local and not be too restrictive in that instance, and not even just say Wyndham County, is that a goal like that can boost, can boost the chances of a business gaining access to federal support or some other kind of mechanism. And so, if it's, you know, because it's one of those moments where you say, yes, it's consistent with the town plan and we've got this goal.
Yeah.
So, I would, I would really like us to actually work on what we mean by local versus, you know, not local, whatever it is. And, and come up with very clear reasons why we think that we don't mind if it comes from Franklin County, even though it's in Massachusetts. Versus Ohio, because I think what we're trying to say is the benefits that we see
Yeah.
are at the area regardless of whether it's from Franklin County or whether it's from Wyndham County.
Right, right.
So, like, just, if it takes more time to work it out, I think it's worth spending some time working that stuff out, is what I'd say. For that, for that precise reason, though.
Okay.
I, yeah, and again, I would say just piggyback off the work that's already been done. Because it's very, you know, it's thorough and it's
So, maybe what we could do is, is everybody read over, you know, the Farm to Plate stuff. And, and just think about the notion of local and, and what, what we would like to express about that. And let you know, Sue, about that. I mean, I mean, because we probably could spend a couple hours now talking about it, but I think we need to, to get informed a little bit and move along into everything else, so. But it is an important subject, so we, we really should be sure and talk about it, get it straight.
I have a question for Dana. Do you feel, from your experience with your work, that under, maybe not so much under objectives, but under the actions to be taken? Do you feel like that's, that those are, I guess, optimum actions, or that there is, should there be any others? It feels, they feel, some of them feel good, but some of them feel a little general to me, again, and I, to me, actions feel like they need to be more specific, but I
I agree with you.
You're more familiar with that since you work with the USDA, so. And with, and I don't know, maybe Stu from the Ag Committee too.
Yeah, I agree with you on the actions. I did make, you know, some notes on some of that, I don't know if you wanna talk about it now in terms of specifics.
Yeah.
So, like for support efforts to create a food hub, put specifically, because there's, a food hub is being created in Bellows Falls. For like, yeah, the Great Falls Food Hub, so like, I don't know if you'd wanna list it specifically, but I would almost say like coordinate with the Great Falls Food Hub.
Yeah.
You know, what the wording would be, but to ensure that Brattleboro is a vital player in that project or something like that, that's specific. It is for Wyndham County in Windsor and
So, the one in Bellows Falls, or the Bellows Falls Food Hub is not, encompasses Brattleboro as well?
It's a regional food hub, and it's the closest one we're ever gonna get.
Regional, okay.
It's in southwest New York.
So, I have a dumb history question about the reference to Great Falls, because you got references to Great Falls in Ternance Falls, I mean, like, there's lots of Great Falls in
It was the falls that were in Great Falls.
Right, so not to Great was somewhere else.
I can say what created it before they
It's like Minabnik and Mount Minabnik.
Right, so I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out the stretch that we, because we know how far that region called Great Falls, if we have a guess. That's what I'm getting at, so if it's located in, if it's located in Bellows Falls, my suspicion is that it's gonna go final to Windsor.
Yeah, it's
And as far east as, as somewhere into, you just New Hampshire, and then
Does include the Hampshire?
It does, I don't know if it's the two, I don't know
That's what I'm getting at, I just wanna figure out what Great Falls is referring to.
Yeah, and they pick there because it's the center, more or less the center of that, and it's economically
Yeah.
So, our wording here would be support efforts to create the Great Falls Food Hub.
I don't know, its status as an organization, I
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's one, one check.
So, Dana, did you have some other specifics as far as actions to be taken?
Well, I guess for three, work with local representatives and state agencies to advocate for mobile slaughter and flash freeze units. And sort of, I guess, like, I have a question to like, at what, you know, sort of, at what level are you talking about? Like through the Ag Advisory Committee? You suggest to work
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I thought that would be, I Good meeting together, but it just seemed like that
But there's lots of groups that are doing food programs, there's groups that are doing gardening projects in schools and, and the snack program that works in conjunction with the farms.
So, could we just, for, just a second, that's action number three. To work with local representatives and state agencies to advocate for mobile slaughter and flash freeze units that are more conveniently located for southern Vermont. And then when you say, so when you say Ag Advisory Committee, do you wanna put them in that action, or is that just what your thought is about?
I thought that meant that was their, I thought that meant that was their goal, but maybe not.
It's just
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
But I think, you know, certainly to my agents, because I really feel as comfortable going where my son and friends
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
I haven't done all the outreach to know.
Yeah, I'd leave all that out.
Um, I have, where did I put that? Oh, I don't know if this would be more under a goal or as an, an action, I mean, I would love to see it as an action, but, you know, sort of zoning and wording, whatever. Advance agriculture as the highest and best use of prime ag land and soils in Brattleboro.
I think some of the, the wording
Well, as long as you're willing to do the country road, that's fine.
I think some of the wording in here needs to be, like in the natural resources plan, we had a lot of stuff in there so it would support some of the future work that we wanna do, and I think that's what you're getting at here, at least I would think with ag land. We wanna be sure that the town plan supports good, good land use, and, and the way we word things and frame things will have a lot to do.
There was a project, the Agricultural Lands Inventory, or lack of, better. That was a project that started at Ziegler in the fall of two thousand nine, Drew Adam was involved with it, and I don't know if you know as well.
I just missed what you were saying, I saw
Oh, on the Ag Lands Inventory, Drew Adam had started back in Oh, on the ag lands inventory that Drew Adam had started back in two thousand nine, it started going somewhere to basically look at taking a land use cover map and kind of looking at moving where the prime ag soils are.
All the soils are mapped.
Seems, seems like we did that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's done.
Yeah, I think it could go to another level, like start identifying threats to, you know, what's existing.
And what's happening to the land in present.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's a great undertaking.
To go.
Yeah.
We can put in here two as a group, because we know different areas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think to get that whole like production piece, like what's going on, on what pieces of land now, definitely, I think that would be really helpful. We definitely, we have all the soils mapped.
So that means be an action step.
For the whole state.
So that's, so that's action number two, create an agricultural lands inventory that captures information on soil type, current land use and food production. Is there anything else that should be in there?
I think maybe even an assessment of the threat of that.
Yeah.
Property or that, that part.
Yeah, I agree, I think.
Threat assessment. Can only do that at night, though, right?
Oh, so kind of back to the whole idea of highest and best use that is always thrown around in
Uh huh.
planning and zoning circles, but, um, you know, kind of what you feel about that in terms of ag land.
I think there's some, planning and zoning wise, I mean, especially, well, zoning wise, if we're looking at subdivision regulations, there are some.
Well, if you look at it and, and what we're gonna do, I mean, what we can put on our agenda for the next five years, if, if, if there was something in here that said, um, you know, when we, when we or they, whoever they are, rewrite the subdivision regs, does there need to be more in there about, about prime ag soils?
And I mean, we can preface that with, like, southern Vermont, there's a lot of pressure on land and there's not a lot of good ag land left. There's a lot of competition for what's here, A number one. Um, and then looking at like percentage of ag land versus other types of land, Wyndham County only has ten percent of its land in ag. And the Vermont State average is twenty, so we're already sort of a little lower in terms of our land base. So kind of taking that stuff into account, like if we're really thinking about, um, you know, being as local as possible, however we define that or whatever, then we need to think about what land we have available to us and make sure it doesn't get turned into parking lots if we wanna.
So would, could you put that information in, in the trends? The trend is that.
And that's in SFJ, too, and they have a very nice little pie chart of that, I don't know where it is, it's down a lot of stuff. It's, yeah. Yeah, I don't know what page this is. It's page ten in the SFJ, acres in ag by county, this is two thousand seven, it's in the farm to plate.
What?
Oh, I'm, um, ten.
Ten.
There's lots of constraints that.
Yeah, what is a, for Brattleboro and probably other parts of Wyndham County, there's, um, we're topographically challenged compared to other counties in the state, so, and then the history of settlement, and I was only, I was only mildly suspicious when it comes to Puntner Road. What makes good, what makes good ag land is also what makes good commercial and retail land, because it's relative to flat and it's development, so.
And somebody's already taken all the rocks.
A prime, a prime example of land use that we can't go back on and turn back into farms is Puntner Road. And really, when you start thinking about Brattleboro, I would say everything west of ninety-one, this look becomes the single biggest factor and it's not necessarily well-suited to contemporary agricultural practice and it's not particularly well-suited to a whole lot of other things either, which is why it ends up kind of large lot residential, you know, woodlots, so.
Small scale animal ag.
But that's where most of our farms are.
Strong little legs.
Strong little legs.
So, um, so, you know, it's just, I think you have to be really careful about, I think we've got a pretty reasonable amount of land that's in, that's, that's as good as it gets for ag here. We're trying to figure out, you know, hey, it's what the, right now, what the relationship between the mapped ag land conditions and what the zoning map looks like, but I'd also say that, um, in contrast to other counties, we don't have a lot of sprawly residential pressure or retail growth, crowding, you know, taking over.
Yep.
Ag land either, which is not to say we couldn't in the future, and we should make sure that where we can have good ag soils coincide with appropriate zoning, which would be agricultural or, you know, rural. But, um, I think the history of settlement is such that we've settled on all the flat bits down the bottom of hills, which happens to be where the top soil is washed as well, so even if you wanna get into the village of West Brattleboro, it's really been there for a long time, cause it's pretty easy to be there. That also happens to be where, that's where the soil is from the top of the hill. So I'm like, it's a lot to undo.
So are, are you saying that, that would, that would say we shouldn't have an action about that, or?
I just think you need to be very aware of the limits of action around that.
Sure.
And the other thing that you need to be aware of is relative to, say, Middlebury, which has got some, you know, probably the best ag land in the state, that also has quite a bit of development pressure.
Yeah.
That's not what we have.
Right.
So it's, I don't, I don't feel a huge threat, um, from res- you know, residential subdivisions are the hardest to deal with in this regard. They break up farmland the most, but I don't feel like that's a really big issue for Brattleboro right now.
I don't know if you, Stu, do you have an opinion about that? I know you having.
Which one are you talking about?
Well, we're, we're kinda talking about.
An action that hasn't been added.
An action.
Well, an action's been added.
An action that hasn't been added.
Hasn't been added.
That would talk about ag, ag land and highest and best use and so forth.
Unless the land that we talked about that was to be developed still hasn't happened, and that's the recreational fields. I think in Brattleboro, we've done excellent protecting land as a whole, but I think we've done just about better than any other town in Wyndham County. But there's one thing, there's still some undeveloped ag land, and if you could, if there's housing done, if you could steer the housing to the edges. You know, and, and not, who likes to see a house in the middle of a plot, you know?
Yeah, right.
So that would be.
So a way to sort of work that in to address stuff like that.
An action to add.
About costering houses.
Yes.
Certainly, yeah.
There's some zoning.
Right, we can, yeah, there's definitely, there's definitely stuff that we can do, but what I'd say is, it's, I don't think there's, a little bit like what Stu said, I don't think there's a hidden, like, bunch of land out there that we haven't thought of that would be suitable for ag that's, that isn't.
There's not much set aside on, I don't think there's any on South Street or Monteville.
Right, right.
Conserved land set aside, land that's set aside that's conserved.
As protected.
Yeah.
One of those dozens, or it, and it could have been done years ago and Paul bought it, he wanted to, but the Housing Conservation Board wouldn't do it. And, but that's a beautiful spot for housing, too.
Up behind.
It's real pretty out there.
It's just some high ground.
So there are some areas maybe that we wanna think about being.
Is it possible to create overlay, agricultural overlay, is, is that not the way, is that the way?
Well, one tool, I mean, I wanna look, yeah, this is what he's doing.
So can we just say that, that for right now, an action to be taken would involve subdivision regs and ag lands?
Yeah, please, guys, please.
Another reason I wanna get the agricultural advisory committee, so I was speaking with Vermont Land Trust, trying to get some data, and Joan Garrett mentioned that she thinks that the Ag Committee probably has ideal some lands that should be prioritized for her.
We could resurrect the Ag Committee first.
So I'd like, I'm, yeah.
How about?
So I'd like.
It's not underground, is it?
Mm-hmm.
It's not an underground committee, is it?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
Yeah.
All right.
What about?
Well, some of them are. It's pretty much a secret.
Yeah.
Meeting secret.
Yes. Um, supporting farm land owners, say, toward the future, um, things change, family dynamics change, things can change, and is there a way to look at, um, helping, would it be a goal or objective to be sure that we are assisting farmers to keep their land in ag use and keeping it local? I'm, I'm.
Is there a federal like transition planning services and state services? You wanting to add something under action items about that?
I don't know if it's an action or if it's just an objective, again, just, I'm just taking a longer range, even though we're only, this plan only is for five years, but to put things like that in, um.
Would that not be included, I know it's a little different, but reduce the barriers for young and beginning farmers to enter agriculture or to expand their existing enterprises.
In the case of Stu's situation.
Well, and for making local stuff, stuff, mass civilization, and needs.
And that's really the, the objective of those two, is to keep families.
Is there specific action, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, is there something specifically that could be added under actions that refers to the Farmland Protection Fund? Like do we, I know, like in a time of shrinking and slashing budgets, you know, is that something that has the potential to, um, be cut from the Brattleboro budget? I don't remember how that's funded, or maybe Stu knows.
Which fund is that?
The revolving, the Farmland Protection revolving.
It's not funded anymore, it was funded once.
Oh, so there's no.
There's money still.
There's money still, there's money in the account.
Because it started at fifty thousand, so in the seventies now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that money is currently available.
It's still there.
It's still there.
Yes, it's assigned today.
I haven't done enough research, but perhaps the need for farmers have changed and they need to modify how they like funding the use of this.
It would take, have to take the representatives to do that.
Right, but perhaps that's something, it's a good conversation.
But could it be a special town meeting? Just a little joke.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you had to be there. No, uh.
Okay, moving along.
So maybe for actions, like review the Farmland Protection Revolving Loan Fund for relevancy or something, or is that beyond?
I think the biggest single question is that it's been a long time since funds were dispersed from that, from it. And so if, if it was to be a question, it would be, why do we still have this if it doesn't seem to get old on very often?
Or why don't people know about it?
Or, right.
Is that the issue?
Well, yeah, and Dan's would be, one of the, one of the potential instances would be that it needs to be better promoted or advertised or whatever.
So can we put that as an action?
Could we list, could we list it in number one there, support Vermont Land Trust, Vermont Housing and Conservation Board?
And Brattleboro's Farmland Protection Loan Fund or something?
Yeah, I think that'd be worth it, though.
Yeah.
Cause that would, that would call it out and, and it would, might, people might say, what the heck is that?
Right.
I would say it. Tomorrow I'll say it. I won't remember. So what is it called, Brattleboro Farm?
It's literally.
Protection Fund.
Thank you. I can remember that Stu talked about it the last time.
What I was talking about for farmers in the future, like perpetuity and, and, is that the right way to mean?
Perpetuity.
Perpetuity?
There's a lot of conserve, there's a lot of ag land in Brattleboro, Easements.
Okay.
Joan's working on getting that, but I've looked them up.
I don't think this is a problem here, but when, in other parts of the country, when dairy farmers in particular couldn't keep up, they were then bought out by big corporations, kind of thing, and I would just hate to see in the future any of that happen here.
How do we?
But how do you do that?
I mean, it's, you know, we've got these funds to help keep them going, there's lots of state, federal programs.
Just in a general kind of way, again, the way we word this, and maybe it's okay.
I'm not sure that we can think of a tool that would do it, or, I mean, the state, I think, could, but I don't.
Yeah, not, not us, yeah.
So Sue, is the, is, what you're talking about, that Joan is gonna give you for numbers, is that that Vermont Land Trust holds conservation easements on X number of acres, okay.
Yeah, which is a pretty positive number.
Uh huh, yeah.
And that's, and you have current use numbers, too, right?
Yeah.
No, I, that current use number was, uh, the one I had down there was placeholder. Um, I'm, I'm working to get that information, the listers, to get the information as homestead or non-homestead. They do a big forecast for the crop and forest, so I, I think that we would need to, which is, it's, 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 so I'm trying to get that. I have a total.
So Sue, your, your objective in that would be to be able to identify both farm and, and forest?
But, yeah, forest would probably show up.
Uh huh.
It's not, not.
Yeah.
Although maple and timber, well, yeah, for me, it's all kind of.
Well, yeah, so maybe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Under trends, and obviously it says where you got this from, the US Census, but it just seemed strange to me that we're right under that little chart there, the graph says the number of farming jobs in Wyndham County is low and declining, I just found that hard to believe, is that? It says, you know, I just, I feel like we're getting more, not declining, but I don't know where that, where that statement.
But it's pretty hot there.
Okay.
Some, yeah, so some of that stuff, like from the trend, like the beginning of the trends, I felt personally like the tone was a little negative. And I, you know, sort of made notes for myself, like referring back to the two reports and thinking, again, more broadly about the food system and food manufacturing and just sort of related activities and is, you know, is what's represented in that census of ag as accurate as it might be, so, um, but yeah.
I understand, like, that's right, it is, it is negative, but if it's a reality of we're talking straight farm jobs.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, but I guess that's my question, should we be talking about straight farm jobs?
Do we want to, do we know, so what is the right tone, if that's?
Yeah. Yeah, well, I guess because we know that the number of farms is increasing, we know the size is getting smaller, but there are more of them. So then, how does that fit with there are fewer farm workers? We also know that, like.
Well, because it's full-time, it's something.
Yeah, but we know that most farmers, like in the state of Vermont, aren't full-time farmers, they have farms off jobs. So how are, how are those numbers being reported? So is it somebody's still got a farm, but they took a job?
But I think.
So, you know what I mean, just kind of.
What's really important for me is that the methodology for, for this agricultural census has been very closely honed and stable for a really long time, so if you wanna make a meaningful comparison between two thousand and nine and nineteen ninety-nine and nineteen ninety-nine and nineteen eighty-nine, I mean, this is the way you're gonna do it.
Yeah.
And, um, there's lots of very useful and positive information in something like, you know, farm to plate, but it doesn't have the same obligation to report that this, the US Census of agriculture does. And I actually don't necessarily read the trend information as either negative or positive, it's just, it's just, um, these are the, these are the facts observed by, by employing a consistent methodology. And if we were to compare ourselves to another town in Wyndham County, or another town in Vermont, or another town in New England, or another name town nationally, this would be the data source that we'll be using to make those kinds of comparisons. this would be the data source that we'll be using to make those kinds of comparisons. So what I'd say is really critical to stick with the best quality data that you can obtain to describe a trend.
Yes, well, but so I guess that's part of my question when we're talking about the trend and do we have an accurate picture? And I don't know, because I don't know like from this stuff, the Wyndham County data, but looking at, okay, what's specifically in the farming section in the US Census of ag that doesn't take into account like a bunch of other stuff? And then looking at what new state level data is being put together that looks at, you know, the sort of the food segment of the economy, not just specifically farming? And looking at, looking at both of those numbers. And so if we're saying, you know, farm workers, like we've seen a drop in farm workers, but we've seen an increase in food manufacturing, which is hard data as well, so really trying to, I think, have a broader sense of the picture of what's going on in food. That's, that's kind of my.
Well, I mean, sort of a, you're into a sort of a, you're into a category problem. So do you want to talk about everything to do with the food system in the agriculture chapter, or do you want to talk about?
Well, I guess that's the question.
The traditional definition of agriculture?
I kind of wanna, it's the same as in the arts, you know, are we talking about just, you know what I mean? Like multiplier effects and all of that stuff, what are we, what are we talking about?
For every, for every section of the community and for every group, there's the same challenges. And there's the problem of the established data collection being.
Incomplete.
No, no, that's not what I was gonna say. You know, it's traditional and it's fixed or, you know, changes very slowly and it might reflect an older conception of how to measure something. But it's, but it's got other benefits, including it's, it's searchable, it's, it's recordable, the error rate is established. People can compare, it doesn't matter whether you're in California or Vermont, there are all these sorts of benefits from using established data sources rather than somebody's interpretation or amassing of data from various sources like food to plate. So I think it's one, I mean, it's one of these moments where as commissioners, you're really gonna have to settle down and figure out how rigorous, how rigorous do you want to be? And what are you gonna actually understand when you see numbers that are presented like this? And I think that there's nothing inconsistent or even problematic about saying that the trends are that there are more farms, there's smaller in size, there's less acreage farmed. Those things seem to me to be perfectly reasonable, there's, there's no real controversy there. And then if follows on, that's a consequence of that, there's less farm workers. So I don't think that there's anything inconsistent in that picture. I think it's really important to say, if that is the picture, I think it's really important to say that. And I think it would be detrimental to the plan and detrimental to our planning needs if we were to say something else.
I don't think we should say anything that's not the case, that's not what I'm talking about at all. I'm just kind of. There's another piece that I think is missing and I think, I think you.
Well, I'm, I'm, it's missing or whether it's gonna come up somewhere else, I guess. So if you want to talk about, for instance, what I say is if in the agriculture section, what we identify is things that are emerging, like there are many new farms, so for instance, one of the things that we can figure out, but really good local knowledge is that there's a bunch of farms that are existing now that are producing things, whether it's llamas or whatever it is, that weren't around ten years ago, then that's important to observe. And they might be the fastest growing farms or they might be the ones that are adding the most employees or then, or even just if it's farms with, with farm gate sales, right? So they might be the fastest growing or the, that might be a subcategory of all farms, it's really important to track and understand. So there's things about what you're trying to get at that I think are important to do, but we would need the information to be able to do that.
I would, yeah, also again, kind of refer you to the two reports and sort of what they're talking about in terms of size of the cluster and employment sort of thing.
And so then if you can figure that out and you think it's about food, because not all agriculture is necessary to do is food production, it could be, ooh, hang on, you know?
Yeah, which is a piece.
No, but where else does food production go?
It goes into, it's part of manufacturing, it's a.
Economic development, you know?
Oh, yeah.
And so then we could pick up the, the, if, if you think that what you've got is an emerging local food sector, then that's something that can get addressed here. But then you make a link to another part of the plan and it would come up and I'm picking on.
Well, sure, I mean, I just want to make sure those connections are all made and it's not just we're sort of line iteming, line iteming, you know, farming. It's like this very specific, small piece because I, you know, I know you've talked about like the percentage of people, you know, in farming and mining or whatever, it's like two percent. And when you talk about arts, but arts is like arts and food service and tourism and a whole bunch of other stuff. And I think the ag piece, you're not getting a clear picture because you're not really looking at. And I mean, that's the, that's how it's reported, but so I think folks are really trying to kind of drill down and get to what are we talking about beyond?
So would it be worthwhile then, under trends, to put, maybe put something about, I mean, I think we could say a trend is that there's a, a food industry in, in the area that, you know, with the cheese company and with the yogurt company. At least to mention it because those are farm reliant, I mean, the fact that, that there's a source of raw materials.
Okay, so yeah, we've got a, we've got a cheese factory and a yogurt factory that we didn't have the last time we did the town plan.
They call those value-added products, but they come from food or they come from farming, all food unless you're producing food through chemicals, which some people do. But we want to support food as agriculture is what I'm hearing here. And not to say that agriculture is all about food, because there's many kinds, but agriculture in the traditional definition has changed, I think. I think that's what you're trying to point out Dana, is it? I mean, that it's more all encompassing and when I think of food, agriculture, I want to be sure that we're looking at again.
I think, I think, are you, are you looking at like page eighteen and nineteen of farm to plate, like farm to plate manufacturing discussion and that? I mean, I can.
I mean, what I'd say at this point is that there's a lot of.
Yeah, there's some stuff in there and in the other report also, like I could read something.
You know, I think the farm to plate report and other examples of recent work from the state under the previous administration as well as this new administration points to agricultural land uses a heritage, you know, is it, is it heritage attribute of the state? People, people when asked if don't live here identified them off with forms of agriculture. The state is working on the idea of, of making that cluster more, you know, bigger and.
And getting a full picture of the cluster.
Right, and so, well, when it comes to describing agriculture per se, I think it's really important that we separate that level of the food, you know, agriculture is part of the food system as being described in other places. And so I think it's important for us to be accurate and careful about describing that part, the agricultural part in the agriculture chapter. And if there are things to do with that food system or food services or related things, then they find their place in other parts of the plan. I think it's worth mentioning that there's a lot of interest on the part of the state now, which I think wasn't present, say in two thousand and four when the last plan was written, around the food system and if there's, I think it's, I think it's okay to say something like, you know, it's a trend that people are much more interested in local, locally produced food and the environmental impact of food production in general. I think there's a much greater awareness than there was ten years ago. I think.
I concur, yeah.
You know, I think there's all those sorts of things that are going on. I think that if you walk into one of the major supermarkets here, you'll see they're making an effort to dip, you know, to, to illustrate that if it's local produce, then you know it's local produce, right? So there's all those things that have changed and shifted and they're subtle. We won't know how many butternut squash, Haniford Sol from one of the local farms, but we know that they actually do do it, whereas I don't know if they did five years ago.
Yeah.
Right, so.
So it's, we've got a few minutes left. Can we say, do we agree that, that of just what you just said about trends Rod, that there are more people interested in local food production now? And that interest seems to be gaining all the time.
And the state made the policy objective.
And, and that the states made a policy of, yeah.
Five major goals.
But, but have a, have, have some trend talk about that.
And with some of the numbers, and if we could get them for Wyndham County, that would be great, but.
Okay.
From not just farm to plate, the tracking the numbers from the other report, growing jobs Vermont style, that was produced funding from the Department of Education in May, two thousand and twenty.
Okay. Maggie?
I have a clarifying question.
Sure.
Are you taking comments from us about this as, are you going through page by page on this? Are you just generally gonna be discussing the whole chat? I mean, I, I guess I'm wondering, I have some things that I would like to convey, but I'm not sure when we want them.
Well, it's kind of like speak now or forever.
Well, I didn't know.
Although, no, that's not really true, because you can send, I mean, this is an ongoing thing, so you can send comments to Sue, you know, via email or drop them off or whatever, you know?
Well, I mean, in the interest of time.
Yeah.
If that's what you would prefer, I'll be happy to do that.
I mean, we're, this is not a set in stone process, but what we're trying to do is make sure that all the commissioners who have been thinking about this and we've been talking about it for a while, that we all have a chance to express ourselves and that anybody that's here from the public has a chance to express themselves.
Well, just, just to, to further record, to clarify, Maggie Bartonigan, I am a member of the town plan advisor community group. So, you know, looking through this, I did have some thoughts coming, but I'm willing to, you know, honestly, in the interest of time, I know you want to end this.
I'd love to hear it.
No, go ahead, I, I wasn't saying you can't say anything now.
Well, I mean, that's what you ask. You know, how do you?
Come on, come across.
She came all the way from Jacksonville, I think we ought to let her talk.
Well, I mean, if you go back to page one, you're gonna, I think there's a vision that to just say that agriculture is appreciated as working open spaces is strong enough. I would use value, agriculture is valued as open, as working open space for its intrinsic contribution. I think that, that sort of starts out this chapter, I think, a little bit more often than just appreciated, that would be one comment. And under objectives and even under actions to be taken, I did not find any reference here, which I think is really important, to minimizing any adverse impacts to the environment by encouraging sustainable ag practices. You mentioned just a few minutes ago about, about, you know, people are being more aware, becoming more aware of the environmental impacts of ag. And it does have environmental effects and there's nothing in here that references that. So I'd like to see that in the objectives somewhere and also in actions, maybe supporting efforts to promote best practices or sustainable practices for agriculture. The only other comment I had is jumping ahead to page seven, sort of related underneath, where there are several potential threats to the economic viability of agriculture. And then if you go boom, boom, down the bullets, under state and federal regulations, including transportation policies, environmental regulations, food safety and health regulations. And I would just question whether those should be considered threats to viable to environmental. The, the, especially environmental regulations, food safety and health regulations. So maybe, I, I don't know if the choice of word, the word threat is, you know, in relation to those things is. Because when I read that, that was what triggered it, oh, you know, it's had a health and safety regulations and environmental regulations.
Some of them are, like, just trying to recall.
Could go either way.
Stoney field about some of the new food safety regulations that are, so I think some of them are.
Yeah, I mean, maybe you could say.
So raw milk, for instance, is a recent controversial example, so. So in the paper, in the New York Times and local papers of the last couple of weeks, there's been discussion concerning the proposed rules from the USDA requiring more elaborate testing on the part of raw milk producers to establish that the milk is good. And that the, that, that would present a barrier. So many small cheesemakers would go out of business because they couldn't afford the pilot or testing. So that constitutes a threat.
Sure, and, and I can understand that, but I guess what I, my concern is that I would, I would hate to see our town plan without explaining in some way or clarifying that, that these regulations are threats to viable agriculture. You know, there may be some threats, but, but the way this reads now, it sounds as though, you know, all of the.
I would say maybe like threats and regs that, that may make it more cumbersome and costly for.
About challenges.
Something like that.
Yeah, challenges.
I mean, I think the bottom line here is if you change the cost structure of operating a small farm to the point where it doesn't pay any longer, and, you know, it, it, if, I think if you're the farmer, it comes as a threat, you experience as a threat, and if you don't survive, that explains why you didn't survive. I mean, it's not a comment on whether it's a good idea or not. I mean, I'm sure people felt like the introduction of our seat belts was a threat too, you know, on some level. But, and put some people out of business, I kind of mentioned two, but I understand what you're saying, that things that are designed to protect the safety of consumers and other things shouldn't be regarded as a threat, or things that are designed to protect the environment shouldn't be regarded as a threat. If it's a threat to the viability of the business.
Directly related to the town plan though, I guess I'm saying the way it reads, it would be great if it could be clarified in some way that suggests that, yes, there may be viable threats to, or real threats to, to agriculture. For example, you know, and maybe listing one or two, so that the impression of the reader isn't that, oh my God, environmental regulation or health and safety regulation is a threat to agriculture. I mean, that's not true, just the same as there are possibly real threats to agriculture because, you know, they, they could put somebody out of business. But I think again, it's, it's a point of clarification for the reader so that it's not a broad brush, it's a more specific comment that's.
I think the difference would be that most.
I think that's, you know, I can do it, point is we don't want really long chapters and, you know, it's, they're not, they're kind of the more global things, so not really issues that we're getting into and that's why.
Yeah, and I also think the difference is that these are, most federal regulations are for big, large farms and we don't have that.
No, the FDA is coming out with a whole bunch of stuff that's really burdensome and not tailored for small farms.
That's right, that's what, yes.
But being applied to small farms.
And that, and that's a threat to our whole farming culture.
Yeah, but that's not, I see what Maggie's saying and that's not necessarily how this reads, so maybe sort of clarifying it a little bit or just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can work on it, but the phrase is threat to economic viability, it's not, I mean, you know, it's quite explicit about what it is.
It's not about helps.
And I think it's a pretty standard kind of matrix of figuring out, okay, what's the future of this sector? What are the threats, opportunities and challenges or whatever it is? They constantly, you know.
It's what you do, you draw, you draw an X and you put these things in different boxes.
Okay, and it is about economic viability, it's not about whether it's a good idea or not a good idea. All right, yeah, I mean, you would say it's just.
Or state and fed regs that may be economically burdensome.
You get the gist, Sue.
Right.
Okay, so you take a look at that.
Right.
Anything else Maggie?
No.
Thanks for bringing that stuff up. It's, it's, it's been a little competitive for me to want to interrupt with my own, with my own comments, but, but, but I need to do this because this isn't my own comment. I gave this paperwork to Jane Jan at Bailey Affair Winds Farm and to get their input on what they thought about it this weekend. And one, one in this first section right here is under goals to be achieved, they put in a bull, a point number four, under three, four, maintain infrastructure necessary to support farming. And they drawn, drew arrows connecting that with then the following point number two under objectives for maximizing opportunities for local producers, that one. So, yeah, so they put.
So what, maintain infrastructure?
So they'd put number four, maintain infrastructure necessary to support farming, and then they were connecting that with the, the following point number two. And then they were connecting that with the, the following point number two.
To maximize opportunities for producers.
Yeah.
So, so what, what?
Is that the farmer's market, for instance, do you think?
Yeah. I, I think, Janet handed this to me as I was on my way here, so I haven't had time to discuss it with many.
Yeah, what you sort of lined out about the farmer's market, and sort of the tenuous, you know, situation there with like land cobbled together and all of that stuff. I, yeah, I think it should be a big focus to address the farmer's market.
Yeah, continued support for existing, I mean, you listed a lot of those food programs that are there, but we want to be sure that there's a goal that we, that we're supporting, continued, those programs continuing.
But, and, and the, the infrastructure also, just, I mean, the fact that they linked it to, like, necessary equipment and everything, I know that that's just, you know, a big issue for everything from, you know, from, from plowing to slaughtering facilities, which is mentioned elsewhere in here and everything else.
Like, when I actually got it, I did it in a different way, and that's the link there.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. That was the only comment in that section they had.
Any others?
You know, touch, I know it's tedious, but if you wanted to summarize those in any amount, shoot them to us, that would be fine.
Oh, okay.
You've got, you've got time.
Why don't I do that with, I, I had a bunch of other comments, we're running late on time, so I'll summarize them and shoot them to you. That's fine.
I also encourage you, if you parse up your copies, and if it's today, I'll make copies and give them back to you soon.
Okay.
You can try and read my handwriting.
You can write your name on top, so we know who's wrong, so if you've got questions about your hard, so it's good then.
Sorry, I monopolize the time, but I'd love to hear more of what you have to say about.
Well, this isn't the last time, in fact, that we'll be talking about this, because there will be, you know, the final version of the chapter. And really, anybody, anything that, any thoughts that you have, please forward them to the department, and, you know, we'll incorporate them into what's going down on paper.
Maggie goes in the line, I can wait and summarize to these guys.
That's great.
Anything else?
Are you getting done?
With, with the ag chapter, yeah.
Do I make a comment?
Sure.
I was worried you were going to get bogged down on, on looking back on what the trends were. And I think the trend is, I, I go along with the trend, but in another couple of years, we're going to have another ag census. And that may change. And I think the, if you can put in something that you're only going for five years here, that the governor wants to create another 1,500 jobs with local food. Of those 1,500, 247 that are going to be farmers, farm jobs. So, you know, if you just have the.
I think that's important.
247 in the whole state?
Yeah.
Okay, so then you.
The rest would be processing and distribution.
That's a good, that's a good number.
And that's for, what, five percent, you mean?
So we can figure out roughly, we can figure out from there what Wyndham County's.
Yeah, that's the.
So I think when you say the ag land, it's just a, a positive thing. Yep, that's right.
Yeah, good point.
And, and I'm, when you had this part of vision, it gave you a history back in 1978 or 79. That was the only thing that was in the town plan about agriculture, was about that paragraph.
Really?
So, so we've come a long ways, we've done a lot of, done a lot of things.
We, we could say that a trend is.
So one reason we talk about it a lot more.
The 1983 report is really impressive. I thought that was really well done, the Bradwell agricultural, the Bradwell cheese.
Yeah, but that's what got us going, was the, the five year plan, five years.
That was really good.
Yeah.
There's still some new talent.
So, that's why maybe we're not so active now, you guys are doing such a good job.
We're ready to hand it back to you, so.
I mean, just think of that, two acres in West Brattleboro, just blew by the bag land. What a commotion that made.
Yeah.
I think we're in good hands, but just as long as you keep ahead of the way you are.
Okay.
Right.
Thanks. That's our crown.
Put down some statistics and be positive.
I like it.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thanks, everybody, so really, please, any comments?
Yeah, that, yeah, if I could just reinforce what Sue said. Hand it in, hand it in, you can write it down, we'll copy it and we'll give it back to you.
Okay. So the next item, and, and we've got a down on here for the, the chapter outlines to be 45 minutes. We really have been going faster than that on these outlines, because I think particularly the communications, I mean, I'd sort of like to.
We need to, we need to make it just a.
Talk about that quickly, because.
Either we do one or we're not doing it, or it's just official.
Unrushed communication?
Communication, so that's the next, the next item.
It's all been crossed out on mine, it looks like it's done, it's done, right? There's like three paragraphs left, yeah.
That's the old, that's the old chapter, the own communications from the old town plan, all right? And so what I did was I used as kind of a spur, my own writing, and you'll see there's a comment right at the top there. Better when it's seen on screen, because it's all different colors. There's not enough content in this existing chapter, this is from the existing town plan, to justify a new chapter. Willstone, which I probably spelt wrong a bit, makes a nice word.
That's lousy communication right there.
Right, we'll sit on, and then, which I think is appropriate, and it is. None of the town plans that we've looked at, that we've used as a guide for how we're going to put this town plan together in Brattleboro have a chapter on communications. And depending on your, where, your, your starting point, the simplest explanation is, is that communications, for better or for worse, are not things, is not an area of activity that is locally controlled, or locally regulated, or has a specific set of land use issues associated with it, once you get beyond the construction and maintenance of cell phone towers and other communication towers.
Where, so I know, like, we've talked about broadband access before and all of that stuff, and now, you know, Southern Vermont is sort of behind in terms of the state and development of those. So where would you want to put it then? Would it be like economic development, like a piece on communication or something like that?
Economic development, which would be the common, you know, objectives about improving, you would dare have objectives about improving broadband access, and the other one is municipal services and facilities. So I think that, for the most part, you just end up being out on a plank, you know, because you're talking about stuff that you can't write, aim, can't write goals and objectives for if you're not in control of it. And when it comes to communications, you're not, you're just not. You know, BCTV exists because cable operators have to pay a fee that funds the operation of a community television channel. It's not anything we have a direct role in, it's not anything that we control, or, you know, it's just there. You know, they have office space here, which is great. Almost every facet of communications is not something that we can express or direct anyone or control or shape in any specific way.
Yeah, I guess my one concern, and just like, so how do we address it, is with like broadband and cellphone coverage, and like the impact that has on small businesses, and, you know, rural businesses and rural people. And it's a big problem in Southern Vermont. And so as, you know, the town of Brattleboro, and in designing our town plan, how do we want to address that? Because all of Brattleboro is still not connected. Like, there are lots of pockets that are still on high speed, and, you know, dial-up and all of that, so, so how are we addressing it? If it's not communications, like, is that something that's really, you know, it makes a statement in economic development? Or sort of where is it, and as long as it's like, and there is a, a strong sentiment?
Well, I, you know, again, I want to caution you, while we might have a desire to have better connectivity and better access to broadband services, the existing set of arrangements that are delivered as what we've got don't appear to be changing dramatically anytime soon. And we're not in a position to change those things directly as a municipality or as a given as a community. So, there, you can break them out as, there are topographical challenges, there are technical problems, but the single biggest one is, there's a market problem. It's not a very big market, and it's got these technical difficulties, topography and. So, if you had a bigger market, you would, those other issues would fade away. Those other issues are exacerbated by the small market size. There's a new administration, there's the announcement of Vermont Connect. That means that there are now three organizations, there's the Public Service Board and its department, there's Vermont Connect, and there's Vermont Telecommunication Authority, all designed to improve broadband access. There's been some federal funding of broadband access initiatives, which have already had local reactions, like Sodanex work and VTEL's work. As it, but, you know, I want to emphasize advocating for and reminding state, state bureaucrats and state politicians that we're here and we don't have internet access yet, because there's as much we can do.
I think it's important.
And so if that ends up in the town plan, then that's fine. I think that can end up in the economic development chapter, and I think it can end up in the municipal facilities chapter. Beyond that, I don't think there's a whole lot else to talk about when it comes to communication. So unless people are really at, you know, unless people have other ideas, I'd prefer that we drop the idea of communication.
Is it a required chapter?
No, it's not a required.
Is it hardly anybody else does it, right?
Not anybody else does it. You're, you know, it's important to map facilities that, you know, have communication status.
Yeah, I, I think like, Dan, it should be included in other chapters.
And, you know, it's sort of, I don't like, I sort of chafe sometimes at the idea that we have, you know, no say, no control over that, and I, you know, it's like a huge, it's a huge undertaking, but companies get licenses to operate in areas. And, you know, it's market-driven and all of that stuff, but if you're going to make your money in the cities, you need to lose a little bit.
Expand it in the country?
Yeah, lose a little bit in the country, it's equity, it's, yeah, it's parity, sorry.
I just make a comment on, on that. The Winnebago Regional Commission has gotten a grant that is allowing them to leverage this broadband access to Vermont, we already, how reaching to small communities, Halifax is one of them, has a broadband committee, that, you know, trying to pool those resources and leverage the, the interest there. But I would also say that if, if, if communications along the lines of broadband, and also really high-quality Brattleboro website that promotes the community, which is also a place where people go, if they're looking, businesses or others, to come to and relocate, that those two things, you know, supporting the idea of leveraging the possibility of broadband here, whatever, whatever means, whether it's working with the Winnebago Regional Commission, and a really high-class, really user-friendly website that promotes Brattleboro should appear somewhere.
Yeah, I agree, that, that would be the municipal services and facilities. So, the good news is, is that the library is going to be the recipient of the fiber optic connection that's part of the Servanet project, which is right next door. So the expectation is that the municipality itself will be able to use the library's fiber optic connection to improve dramatically the amount of information we can place on the web and the efficiency of the web. And so I'm hoping that it would bring forward enough resources to redesign the webpage for the town and to have it much more attractive.
Yes.
And lots of color. And.
Hold them longer too.
That would be good.
Because they cut their hours.
Right, so, so I think, yeah, I think, I, that's where it would turn up, and that's the expectation.
Whose responsibility is the, 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 the sort of website?
For the town?
Yeah.
We've met him here.
Nobody means like for content.
Who does the town website now?
There is no one, there is.
I mean, it's just.
Departments have their own content.
It looks, it is what it looks like.
Yeah.
There's no one department that's trying to get, like, we were responsible for these stuff.
Most of it falls under you.
Would you like to do it?
What's the plan?
Zero.
Did you get, you got some of those chocolates, right? You're on the way.
Get them all over it.
I mean, there's, there's obviously limitations to the design. It's a very easy program for.
Yeah, it's totally like dinky hand-built.
I mean, I just, I didn't know who's.
Beautiful thing.
I had another question, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Gary.
That's okay, Larry, go ahead.
How many people currently do not have access to broadband?
I don't know.
We don't know.
I just know there are pockets. I know, I only got it last year after intense lobbying.
Right, one of the biggest challenges that we have, which is a carryover from the last institution, I mean, the last administration, and then to some extent, the way in which licensing is done and wanted. The all available information that we have, including access maps, are roughly ten years old. So, it's one of those areas where, when you, when you think about how the, the web as a sector of society is moving and operating, it's incredibly data-driven, and it generates huge amounts of data online. And that's what pushes it. And we can't get access to any meaningful information about access to broadband in Brattleboro or Southern Vermont at all. It's just anecdotal, she's got it now, she didn't have it last year.
But is there a need, I mean, is there people that reach out first?
A woman, the Vermont Partnership for Fairness and Diversity got some money, oh, yeah. So she's doing a survey, it's statewide.
For the, that's for the Public Service Department.
Yeah.
Maybe her access issues are a little bit different.
Different. She told me about people who've got barriers to access due to social or economic or, or physical circumstances.
Than just location, yeah, it's not just.
Disability access slash social access question, rather than.
Geographic.
Purely geographic question.
Is there a pipe or a cable coming into the front of your building? So, what I'd say is that, while, before we get, while it's now well-established from the president on down that we appear to be slipping in international comparison of broadband access, there's also plenty of very learned literature that mean, that suggests that there is no direct link at all between economic development and access to broadband.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, so, when, and if you reflect a moment on your own views, if you think about how much of it constitutes entertainment, which is kind of a business, versus actual work, which would be a little bit different, it feels different when you're doing it, what do you use in the web? So, the data suggests that the link that people like to make between economic development and broadband access is in fact not there.
You could communicate with all of us a lot better if we had better internet access.
There's, there's, there's a, there's a growing learned literature on it, yeah. I mean, you know, where they do.
Did you see that on the web?
Actually, I downloaded that from the web, yeah, it's a PDF.
Okay, fine.
Personally know some businesses who were struggling until we got high-speed in my area. Says, anecdotally, consultants who, yeah, work from home.
So is it our consensus, then, that, that will have the communications part be included in economic development and municipal facilities?
Yeah, as long as all those things that we want covered in them, and library use would be one of them too.
I'm sorry, are there any community-owned, like, communications, like BCTV, what, that's a nonprofit organization?
Yes. That even that itself is a little category of existence allowed for under the federal communications. Yes, indeed.
Catherine?
I think it's either Bennington or Burlington, because.
Um, yeah, it's Burlington, and we probably wouldn't use them as a model right now. Pending, pending a thorough investigation.
Lot of, lot of turmoil on that right now.
Controversy there.
Yeah.
So do we need to make a motion to not do this, or can we just say we don't want to do communications?
Let me just say you don't want to do it, it's fine.
Well, not we don't want, oh, that we don't want to do the chapter.
As a chapter, yes.
I have those for communication, we'll discuss that. Part I'm reading is the five, three, fifty-three, page fifty-three, it says five, three. To anticipate and address the needs of people of disability in all communications between town and citizens. What I'm thinking of is, in an emergency, let's say you need to evacuate people with wheelchairs, especially in the suburbs. You need to train. You need to train the rescue, the police, whoever comes to get the people who live here. What they need in a wheelchair, batteries, chargers, how to get them going if they don't have all these things, how to run them. These emergency people that collect the disability people need to be in knowledge of how to take care of the power chairs they need to get around in emergency. Let's say they need to go to a shelter, but they need their power chairs to go to the shelter. They need maybe batteries to keep them going, some to plug them into charger to keep them going. Some of the power chairs have the oxygen tanks on. You're going to need to take their octagons with them and their hoses.
Where would that be addressed in like emergency? Be more, I mean, are these services?
Municipal services, but I think, to be fair, that's a level of specificity that would be covered in the emergency operations plan, which the town does have. So again, I'll make sure that that gets to the right people.
Yeah, they, they need to know all this.
All right.
Do you think that's lacking currently?
Yes, I, I think a lot of people don't have the knowledge of the power chairs and it's increasing in Brattleboro alone.
The use of peop-, like more people.
More people use the power chairs.
Yeah.
And scooters and emergency people would know what type of batteries they need. They, they're not, we've got, I have two size car batteries, but they're not car batteries, but they're as big as car batteries.
Yeah.
But you can't buy car batteries to run.
Right, they're sealed.
They're different kinds. You're going to need to have like a few or so, half dozen on the entrance case in an emergency.
So I could imagine that, that goal, five point three, being in the municipal facilities chapter, right?
And I think, I, I think that the question of people being able to communicate effectively with the town shouldn't just be minimized to the question of access, you know, to your municipal services. But I think that's the most appropriate chapter in a plan. And this is not the first time we've heard the comment that people feel like things have been improved there. So we'll certainly move that in.
And so that, and it makes sense that, that the website.
Right.
Uh, quality and ease of use and so forth would be in there too.
Yeah, and we're going to, we'll put Larry's name aside that.
Well, the other part of that emergency, when you take them to the shelter, you have to make sure there is beds for the handicap, they need to, like, not cots.
That's right.
Not inflated. They have to be, so be the hospital bed, the bed.
Right.
Toiletting people to get into and not twenty-four hours staying in a chair.
And to be sure there's toileting facilities that are handicap accessible also.
Exactly right.
Right. So I think that's a good set of questions for the emergency operations.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Thank you so much. That's great.
And.
So that's actually one of the few goals that was left intact at the moment.
Okay, good.
So, thank you. Do you want to move on quickly to transportation in two minutes or less?
Well, let's move quickly to transportation. So you can see if everybody has a copy of this, you can see the same idea, the, the, that statement at the top is the, is the value statement. And again, that's, that's something that is meant to bring us together as a community, that it's something we can all agree on and then everything else should flow from there.
So there's no vision statement here yet then?
No.
This is the beginning.
So then, yeah, what you have there is the principal statement.
Yeah.
So, and the idea is that, that everything else in the chapter flows from the, from what Brattleboro values, including the vision. And this is just sort of a survey of, of different items that jumped out, right? So from previous conversations and meetings. And as you can see, there are several things here that, well, you may not be able to see, but there are several things here that were, that came out of a couple of the, the big meetings that we had, the one introductory meeting, the first meeting. There was an awful lot of discussion of transportation. And as it says here, sidewalks, bicycle lanes. And the goals down below about adopting complete streets, comprehensive sidewalk capital improvement plan, improved bike ped transit too from downtown, including bike storage, revised land use regulations to foster non-car-based movement in town. We should probably put, I mean, we need to write explicitly handicap access issues. I think that's one of those things that people are thinking of when they talk about bike ped, but we should put it in there. And just put it, call it out, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
One of the, either as an objective or an action step that would follow under the goals when you talk about comprehensive sidewalk capital improvement plan, and we talked about this, that it seems to be that there's been different people that have come to our meetings who have different ideas about sidewalks in their neighborhood or different areas, like say from Morningside up Route 142, that there really isn't good sidewalk pedestrian ways there. And how do we get that information so that because the public works has their own priorities of which sidewalks and they have their, sort of their scale and their way that they look at sidewalks, but how can we? I, I think there needs to be either an objective or an action step in here so that there can be a better working together between, not, again, not to say that by any means Steve Barrett and his crew are not doing it correctly, that's not it, but that input from citizens that would be able to work in with their plan so that these areas, when we're really looking at doing more complete streets and more pedestrian-friendly areas, so that people who live in these different kind of areas where there's real neighborhoods can have access to come into town. And maybe there could be a, a goal of, I don't know whether it's a, a group of people that works with him or how we do that.
Well, I think what I mentioned by comprehensive sidewalk capital improvement plan is that right now we have a dedicated set of funds that's in the general fund and is used every year.
Yeah, yeah, there's a side.
And it's not a huge amount of money.
No.
And sidewalks are very expensive.
Yes.
What tends to happen is the ones that receive the most complaints or are known to be the most ill-prepared get detention. And that pretty much uses up all the time and all the funds that are available in any one year. What we're really, what we would really hope, what I, what this would imply is more funds and then a rank, a ranking. So you might say, okay, we want to improve the links from areas adjacent to downtown to downtown. So in the first five years, we want to focus on getting the sidewalk from the, up 142.
But who's going to say that? That's what I'm saying. There's people in town. I'm, I'm looking for a way that that can be inputted here.
You'd have, you know, it, it would have to be something that the select board explicitly understands is a recommend, as a, as a, as a goal of the plan that they act on because it's them as, as, as road commissioners that are responsible for that expenditure.
Yeah.
And so it would, it would work, you know, there's lots of different ways it could work, but it would involve a planning process that involves DPDW.
It's all right. I just.
And us, you know, maybe the planning department.
I just think there's been enough people coming and saying that over time that we need to be sure that that's in here so that that can be something as a town that we're looking at ways to, how can we put that together? Even if the budget stays the same, even if there's never any more money.
Uh, if the budget stays the same, it's not really going to get any better. I think what we're, no, I think seriously we're at the point where if, if the public is conveying very clearly through this process that sidewalks are a really big deal, then what I'm expecting is that the distribution of all the money to the various different pots, the pot that now gets sidewalk money, that has to grow, which means that something else has to shrink.
Yeah.
And so that's, if the select board is hearing that the right way and that's what they decide, then, then you get something meaningful out of a, out of a capital improvement plan that makes sidewalks a bigger priority than they currently are. But.
Is there a place, I, 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 I know we talked about the traffic safety committee some. Um, and I, I can't remember if, if that's a place that people go and talk about sidewalks to.
Yes, in fact, um, I'm sorry, Mr. Noel's issues at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
That are probably more within the scope of traffic safety and the select board. And I know there's been before the select board, people comment, made similar remarks there, but.
I, I wonder if, I mean, I doubt that most people know a whole lot about what the charge of the traffic safety committee is. But because I, I think of the things that we hear from people about, they probably have an awful lot to do with the traffic safety committee and people don't seem to know that, you know? And I wonder if it wouldn't be good to either, if, if, if that's not explicitly the charge of that committee, if it, if it ought not to be expanded to include that or something, you know? Because I, really, I think it is. It's a, it's something that comes up and has come up in every forum that we've had.
Yeah, that's true.
And I feel like people don't know where else to express us. Even when we did the survey at the hospital that day, that's what people talked about.
Yes.
Well, that's what we asked them to, but, you know.
Every venue I've been in, I would say it's either, it's one of the top three ranking.
Yeah, yeah.
In census, every venue.
Yeah. So I'd like to put something about the traffic safety committee in this.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
You know, at least, at least something about the definition of it or the charge of it or something. So that if somebody picks up the transportation chapter and they're interested, they would know that as a possible resource. If it is one. And if it's not, maybe it ought to be, I don't know.
Yeah, I second that. I think that's a great suggestion.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, that's my soapbox there. Anybody else have anything to say about transportation? Or not? Yeah.
Okay. If anyone's really challenged about the abbreviations, I mean, I will just hammer this out pretty quickly, so.
SUV?
Yeah, I don't know what that really refers to. And CT is not Connecticut. That's an abbreviation.
County.
I knew you'd say it that way.
When we talked about like with bike lanes and stuff, signage and all of that, would that fall under here? Or is that being covered elsewhere? In terms like for bike routes and stuff and?
Yeah.
Yes. That's, if, if, if the process that we go through identifies the lack of meaningful sign or that we, that we need to improve the signs to assist bicyc-, bicycle travelers, then yes, where we go.
Okay.
Is that your issue?
Yeah, I would add that. And because remember we talked about like the, at Exit Two, like sort of coming off, like folks who ride along Western Ave have to cross there and it's not always clear to people coming.
What sort of a picture would you like to have describe those conditions as you cross over ninety-one?
Ask a little bit.
Like a yellow sign. Maybe someone flying over the handlebars of a bike and a speeding car like coming.
Or you can have someone's drawing number one right now.
Yeah, like someone, yeah.
All right. Okay. So that's, if you're looking for a sign like that, okay.
I'm just discussing generally like sort of signage in terms of whatever.
Yeah, and for pedestrians too. I mean, that's another thing that we hear from people that come to meetings is that they need to know how to get around downtown, how to get from the train station to the.
Yes.
Parking garage and so forth.
I would, I would, a smaller subset of meetings that we've been to, the issue around signs is.
Yes.
Number four.
Yes, we've gotten lots of that from your folks who come to the grad center too. Get off the train and people from somewhere else go, oh, is there a downtown to this town? Where is it? Anyways, I'm being a little facetious, but.
Yeah.
I used to drive where I go taxi and take people off the train and they expected our town to have five, six cats waiting, asking for a train to take them somewhere. And I tried to tell them that this is not a city. This is country.
Yeah. This isn't the Chattanooga Choo Choo, right?
Yeah, that's kind of cool.
Just a real quick comment. If we're talking about transportation, one of the other things, whether it's in the vision paragraph or goals objectives would be maybe promoting the town of Brattleboro consistent with the vision statement or the principal statement. We encourage fuel efficient or biodiesel in the way of the vehicles. But I, I think buses are a.
They were and they aren't.
No. Well, I mean, that might be something that we could suggest or say we value or promote or support in this chapter, moving towards the twenty percent.
One of the, oh. No, we're holding that up. We're, we're going to hold on to that for twenty seconds.
We're going to go back to horses.
We'll be back to horses.
So, I'm getting written down. So we don't operate the buses directly anymore. So what kind of fuel like put in the buses is not something that we can directly control anymore. I do know from bitter experience that DPDW stopped experimenting with biodiesel and it didn't go so good.
In the cold weather?
Uh, no, they had fungal infection.
Send them to the doctor, with the doctor. You know, give them the right drugs.
Very serious fungal infection that killed a couple of things. So, so they had to, yeah, so it was a pretty serious outbreak there. And they're not over that yet. So there's that issue. Then the energy committee at a earlier point had, I think, tried to work with DPDW collecting data on, you know, fuel usage as a way of trying to get at efficiency. And I think that in the energy chapter, what we're hoping to do is have a goal that explicitly says, we don't really have base level information right now about how much fuel is used in, in the vehicle fleet. All the vehicles, including the police cars, get fuel from the same place now because the buses are not a part of our operation. And that is at DPDW. So we can actually measure who gets what fairly easily.
Oh.
But somebody would have to, you know, we'd have to make this have a goal and develop the resources to it. But yes, I think it's worth considering that fuel efficiency in the town fleet is a goal that we should be focusing on. But I had in my mind at least that that would, I mean, you could cross-reference it in the transportation chapter, but it was an energy chapter kind of thing that I think. Right. But on that very point, which is not, it was kind of a transportation thing is, but again, it came up in the energy chapter, which was to encourage carpooling by designating car parking spaces in the paying display lots for carpooling in people who are running car pools, right? So you'd get preferential parking if you're, if you're part of a carpool. So you would have a different colored tag or something or, you know, and you would get to park closer to the high speed sidewalk.
So you have to like walk over to the thing together and get the ticket or?
No, there's permit, there's permit, there's permit parking in High Grove and there's permit parking in the parking garage.
Oh, permit parking, okay.
And so you could have a permit that was a different color that said, and.
Carpool.
Interchangeable amongst multiple cars.
Uh huh.
All right. So it didn't matter who was driving the car, you'd get a preferential parking space, blah, 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 blah. I mean, it's not a very complicated thing to figure out.
Yeah.
I would like to support different area industries encouraging carpool within their groups, like people who all say work at the retreat or who work at, yes, Precision, that we could support people through leadership in those corporations, encouraging them to have their, their workforce carpool together and setting up systems within their programs.
Probably have to like give them something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's okay.
Right.
But that's an easier way to, I think, to do carpools and since we're not a big city.
Yeah.
Last thing I want to say is anytime that you have handicap issues or need to ask disability questions, call the VCIL slash ADA.
All right.
And we can answer and try to get your questions. And we can answer and try to get your questions answered or answer anything.
They're down in the Marlboro Tech Center, right?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, second floor, yeah. Thanks, Elizabeth.
Okay, thanks.
So, that's about, the, the trend stuff, I think I can back that up fairly readily with numbers, I think that there's some things that are worth chewing over in the trend data, some of it's Vermont level, some of it's a little bit more specific. Vermont doesn't come out great when you do, um, surveys or studies of the number of commutes done by singles often.
It's ninety-four percent.
Yeah.
Right, I think that's what the, what the state, uh, this thing says, ninety-four percent of people every day driving a car by themselves, yeah.
Um, and.
Hard to get any higher than that really, you know.
Some of us will work on it. Um, and that, for reasons again to do probably with the topography and the climate, um, we have a higher percentage of oil drive slash S U V ownership and pickup truck ownership than, than the national average, which means that the private fleet, if you like, is less efficient than, um, if you were to take a snapshot of a different community somewhere in more urban or metropolitan, um, I think, you know, we're at an interesting moment that the state has, um, shown early interest and support for the complete streets program, which would then change the relationship between motorized vehicles, use of roads and streets versus non-motorized. So would change the power dynamics, you know, like all the different things, like the bike pit and, um,
Power chair.
Power chair community versus registered motor vehicle. And I, it's hard for me to tell at this point what the implications of us adopting complete streets would be.
Mm-huh, mm-huh.
Um, and so I think that what I need to do is actually get some more information from the commission as a whole to look at it. I don't think in the current circumstances the state's gonna make funds available to implement things like complete streets. It would, I think, change the way we, again, going back to DPW, uh, other things such as that, or the decisions of the select board, it might end up that we rank certain streets more highly in terms of the work that they need to have done on it so that they can, we can achieve a network of complete street, streets, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
In terms of their design, um, the last element there, I think we would probably be a little bit challenged to. Top track, but like Eaton Hill, I don't ever think you'd like to participate in a complete street program, because it's not very complete right now.
No.
It's pretty complete, yeah.
A complete area is not a street.
Even more so in the winter.
Right, it, it's a complete luge program.
No, it just gives the town the experience of living in San Francisco. That's all.
All right, so that's about it for me on that, unless there's any other points.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Is there any vast trail networks that go through Brattleboro, you know, the.
No, there are nowhere, I think there might be one in far west Brattleboro, but it's certainly not north of here. And it's certainly not in the bottom corner to do with Gilford and Halifax.
I don't know, I don't, I just was thinking, I know, you know, recreational vehicles are a trend, and I don't know if that was something you wanted to consider, but if there's no trail network, I don't see a reason to put that on the, I, I didn't know myself, and I don't, I'm not a rider or anything like that, I just.
The other, you know, uh, we have talked in the, um, other chapters about the trail network for walking, you know, and running and, and the possibility of extending that by a certain amount and actually cataloging that, you know, so that people know where that is, so. So that is something that we've been talking about, but not, not for our.
Maybe people are gonna start commuting on their, their ATVs, you know, we better put that in under commuting routes, you know, do an assessment here.
Yeah, from Keene.
That's right.
Yeah, how great would that be?
Riding's not good.
From Keene to here.
For commuting, you know, cheap on gas.
That's a great going the other way, but.
Just feel, just feel ill, you know, there, it's gonna be probably people be better and stuff.
Did you have any comments? Looks like you wanna raise your hand again.
No, no.
I just look like I'm about to fall asleep.
Oh, oh, that was what I thought you were.
So we're somewhere between our hopes and our dreams here and, uh, so.
We're good.
That's the way it goes, but, uh, any, any last comments from our public about the commission?
Should we re-encourage livestock to be on the road now, would that be part of the complete street?
I love that, commuting by horse.
Oh, sheep.
That's all, yeah, folks don't ride horses anymore.
And goats rattling, rattling around, you know?
Because of the insurance, but it would be great.
You can ride, you can ride E news apparently.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn then, in that case.
Aye, motion to adjourn.
My second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Are we up to date on our schedule for next time, it says, education and energy drafts for two weeks from tonight.
What are we doing?
Thanks for coming.
Yes.
Thank you everyone for coming.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.